Please call the row. Roll.
Councilmember Barth. Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Bran Sutter.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Councilmember Simpson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whalen.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Thank you. Now, would you all please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women that are serving overseas, followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first I am of business under proclamations and presentations is Youth Council Recognition and Report. First, we have Mr. Fairfield to present a Youth Council video.
I'll hit play.
Perhaps not.
Actually, Albert, Albert will be doing the Youth Council Report.
No. Hi, I'm Adora Slies Cruz. I go to Clover Park High School. I'm in the 11th grade, and I served on the Landmarks and Heritage Board and on the City Youth Council. One thing I learned while serving on the City Youth Council is something about myself, how much pride I have in my city, and how much I love being a citizen of Lakewood, how much I love the people who live here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Casio Trujillo. I go to Clover Park High School. I'm in the 11th grade. I serve on the Arts Commission, and one thing I learned through Youth Council was how the city works and how to make connections outside of my school and age group.
Hi, my name is Elisa Sagisi. I go to Harrison Prep. I'm a senior, and I served on the Community Service Advisory Board. And basically, what Youth Council has taught me is that I, as a youth, have a voice in my city and the things that go on in my city. I also learned a lot about how service agencies work and how the money is funded towards them and how they benefit my local community.
My name is Dorian Simon. I attend Lakes High School. I'm a junior, and I'm a part of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. One thing I've learned in Youth Council is the importance and power of youth expression so we can create a world that we want to live in.
I'm Peyton Gomez, and I'm a junior from Covenant High School. I learned what an impact that teenagers can make on society. Some of it, just the simple things that we bring up in our meetings, have created an impact in our community and have caused change.
My name is Dante Ost, and I'm a sophomore at Harrison Prep. I learned this year at Youth Council the importance of serving your community and the value of building relationships within other schools.
Hi, my name is Cassidy Barnes. I'm currently a senior at Harrison Prep, and I serve on the Public Safety Advisory Commission. What Youth Council has taught me is actually something based on a quote I saw in The West Wing, the idea that decisions are made by those who show up. And Youth Council taught me that half of the job really is just showing up. The rest comes along with it.
My name is Therese Palacio. I'm a 10th grader at Curtis High School. And this year in the Youth Council, I learned the importance of creating lasting bonds within the community and stepping out of your comfort zone for, to better other people.
Hi, my name's Lenise Kamak. I'm a sophomore, and I go to Harrison Prep. And something that I learned from Youth Council was the power that the youth hold and what we do in our city.
Hello, my name is Natalie Jeanette Cruz. I am currently a senior at Clover Park High School. I served on the Community Service Advisory Board. Something I learned from being a part of the Youth Council was being able to connect with students who share similar passions as I do and helping the community as well.
Hi, my name is Katie Wilton. I am a junior at Harrison Preparatory School. And one thing that I learned from Youth Council is that the, our community members are very responsive to our opinions and what we think should be changed in the city. And I think that's very important, and it's something that I'm very happy to have because I feel like a lot of times, youth's opinions are overlooked. And I just feel very appreciated for what I do when I see people from all parts of the community coming to ask us, you know, for our opinion.
I'm Jefferson Maguianes, and I'm 17. I am a junior at Clover Park High School, and I served on the Parks and Recreation Board. And what I learned was that, like, how the council worked around the community and what they did, how it happened, all that, so.
Fantastic. Well, Albert, you have something to report before we hand out your certificates?
Yes, I do. Good evening, Mayor Anderson, Deputy Mayor Whalen, City Council, and citizens of Lakewood. I will be providing the Youth Council report for this evening. The Youth Council has been pushing all the way to the end of this year. This past Saturday, several of our members worked at the memorial service of former Mayor Claudia Thomas. Many of our members who attended saw it as a way to give back to the person who pushed to give a voice to the youth of Lakewood, and they really appreciated the opportunity. Councilmembers Natalie Cruz and Dorian Simon assisted Workforce Central in a presentation for funding given to the City Council on the 29th of May. The Youth Council also had a discussion with Councilmember Bokey at our last meeting about bullying and is now thinking ahead to how we can discuss concerns with educators in the upcoming year. And as we wrap up our term, we are looking to set a date for interviews for new Youth Council members. I'll now call up our members for the school reports.
Good evening. And basically, what CP is up to, our choir band and drum line had their concerts, and it went pretty well. We have our Moving Up Assembly tomorrow where the seniors are preparing to graduate this Wednesday. And our prom was two weeks ago, and that went pretty well, so.
Awards nights, where we got our stools and cords. We also had the awards assembly for the rest of the school last week. We have some of our fellow new exec board members with us today. They were recently voted in and sworn in and everything. Seniors are checking out this week and graduating as well. Finals for the rest of the students start next week. Drama Club is preparing to go to Fifth Avenue for awards and recognition for their plays and musicals put on this year. And we are also preparing for Puma Palooza on the last day of school. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chovy Reyes, and I will be giving the school report for Lakes High School. Graduation tickets are on sale tomorrow, and the graduation's on Wednesday. Today was the seniors' last day, and it was very sad. The past Wednesday, on the 30th, were the JROTC award ceremony. On the 23rd, there was the Artesia STEM Fair and the Deca Trade Show after school. And fall sports training has begun.
And we would just like to thank the City Council and the city of Lakewood for supporting all of the youth and providing us a forum to voice our concerns and, of course, our successes. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the Youth Council? Deputy Mayor Whalen.
No questions. Just to thank you to all of you for your years, if you've been on council more than once, obviously, your years of participation, especially on the citizen advisory boards and commissions. That has been very helpful, and the feedback that we've received from the quote-unquote "adults" on those boards has been unanimous in their appreciation and excitement, true excitement, to have a youth voice present. So, thank you all. It's great.
Mr. Bran Sutter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank all the Youth Council members this year for your valuable input on a variety of issues where the council was dealing with and was looking for what you're doing. And I am glad to hear that you have taken some ideas to begin to thinking about how, I guess, moving forward into next year, you can address concerns around bullying, which has emerged, unfortunately, as a, as a community concern and topic and with much conversation. But I think that you're close to the people most affected, and I so, I think that if you take and come up with some reasoned suggestions, they'll get some serious consideration. But again, thank you all again for a very productive year.
Thank you.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to add to the Youth Council that for those of you who are graduating and moving on, keep doing what you're doing. Stay involved. Don't quit. You guys have done a great job. This is the beginning, not the end, of anything. As to those of you who are new to the Youth Council, start pushing now. You will find this council receptive. We listen and we act. And I, and I'm sure my colleagues will join me in saying, we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to add my, my thanks. I'd echo what my colleagues have said, and I'm very impressed with the quality of our Youth Council, your engagement. And I'd like to also express my personal appreciation for your finishing strong in the year and taking part in late Mayor Thomas's reception after a memorial service. So, that was much appreciated by the community. I believe we have some certificates for you. Mr. Bokey will present.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Great council, a big council, very good participation. I think the, the moment I really knew that we had some serious folks was when the group that's working on the downtown subarea plan came to speak to them, and the ideas that they came up with and the thoughtfulness that, that they, they put into those ideas was just incredible. And, and I knew they were, they were a group of deep thinkers. So, I'm going to hand it out to the folks that are here tonight, and the first one, baseball Albert James.
And please, please stay up here. We're going to take a photograph afterwards. Next person is Brian Noel from Lakes High School. Next individual is Cassidy Barnes. Harrison Prep. So, I'm going to embarrass, I'm going to embarrass Cassidy a little bit. She has to tell us where she's going to go to school next fall.
I'm headed to Princeton.
Dante Ost. Dorian Simon. Elisa Sagisi. Jefferson Maguianes. Joey Reyes. Katie Wilton. Lenise Kamak. Susan Casio Trujillo. All right, council, would you please join the Youth Council envelope for a photograph? Next, we have the Clover Park School District Report. Mr. Paul Wagaman.
Good evening, Mayor Anderson and Deputy Mayor Whalen and council members. It just reminds me of like being in kindergarten, you know? It's show and tell. You got to see our best and brightest here tonight, and it is a good preface for the rest of the report that we're having. Some things you may have seen or heard, but I would like to start out with Harrison Prep and Lakes were ranked by U.S. News &amp; World Report. Harrison Prep was ranked third in the state and 101st in the nation, and that was out of 28,800 schools. So, that's pretty cool. And, you know, when you talk, 101st, so there's 50 states, so that means Harrison Prep would be number two in every state in the Union. That's one way to look at it. Clover, or Lakes was ranked 31st in the state and 2,057th nationally. So, according to U.S. News &amp; World Report, we have some good schools going in our community. Clover Park High School, one of the things is our swimming pool is being, it's been, it's always open for the public. It's going to be closed. We've got to do some work with the lights and some other work there to make it a more usable and safer facility. So, the sad part is it's going to be closed for a little while, but it'll be, when it comes back, it'll be even better. Prior to the closure, Clover Park High School pool will be open for open swim Tuesday, May 29th through Saturday, June 9th. So, this Saturday will be the end of that period, so the people are using that. Grand reopening, we'll let you know when that's going to happen. Don't have a date yet. 2018, our school year calendar is on our website, so if you're interested in what's going to happen next year, it's out there. Harrison Prep Junior Katie Wilton won the Military Youth of the Year Award, so that was pretty exciting. You know, we're, we're pretty happy for that, and again, we're a military community, and we, we in the school district benefit from a lot of grants because of Department of Defense. We also, and many of you were there, the Arlington Project was a successful event this year. We're getting lots of recognition from across the nation because of the work of our young people. You know, I get lots of comments that says that maybe we're not doing enough to help our young people look at our nation. You're seeing young people here involved locally, but when they look at what our veterans have done, certainly those little flags that we have, our little symbols that we put in the grass out there symbolize people that gave their lives for our country for what we believe in and what's important. And our young people do a great job of following that. If you haven't had a chance to see Taking Chance, is a CAECO or a casualty assistant officer bringing the remains back to a family in Wyoming? They've shown that the last couple of years, and I'm sure they're going to show it again. If you haven't seen that, I would encourage you to take the time, come to the Arlington event next year and watch that. It's, it's about 45 minutes. It's a tearjerker, but it really shows how we, as a country, honor those that have given their lives for our country. Graduation ceremonies have been set. You heard a little bit about that. Wednesday, we'll get Lakes and Clover Park. Thursday will be Harrison Prep, and Friday will be our, shoot, we've got our Open Doors program. I don't know if you're familiar with Open Doors, but it's, it's a program that we put in place a couple of years ago to help people that have struggled and haven't put their priorities in the right place, but give them a chance. And I'll tell you, if you have a chance to go to any of our graduations, I would encourage you to go to Open Doors. It's a tearjerker, both for parents and children that have, or young people that get their diploma, because for many of them, it's the first time that they really had hope going through the whole process. It's been my experience, anecdotally, that people drop out of school because they don't have hope. They don't think they can make it. And I'll tell you, we, we certainly spend a lot of dollars trying to help our young people get through this. We've got a lot of teachers working very, very hard to help young people get to the next level. Open Doors has helped some of those that have been maybe left out, and we're trying to make, make that really work. We have a district retirement reception, reception on June 11th. If you're interested in some of our staff that'll be leaving after many years working for us. We had Clover Park School District student placed first in the Pierce County Library Writing and Art Contest. That was, did they have her name? Yeah, here it is. Harrison Preparatory School student Ava Moner took first place for a drawing in the 7th and 8th grade category. So, we have some budding artists. I had the opportunity, some of you were there too, with our photography from Lakes High School that's over at St. Clair. If you've seen any of that work, it's pretty amazing what our young people are doing. We, we've got, over the summer, we're going to do credit retrieval for students that don't have enough credits to graduate. They'll be able to work on those. We encourage, well, if students want to do that, it costs them $75. If they complete the program, they get their $75 refunded. But you got to pony up first. I think there are some scholarships and things to make that work. Let's see, what else? And we had Employee of the Year. You may have heard Mel Nennis from Clover Park High School, you know, Boys Education, Boys Basketball Coach, was recognized as our certificate Employee of the Year. Administrative Assistant for Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools Terry Herbert at Student Service Center classified as Employee of the Year. And former Iowa Principal Jim Pfeifer was recognized as Administrative Employee of the Year. So, we just did that, and we just have a lot of employees doing some really great work. I had the opportunity to go to two award ceremonies. I didn't get a chance to go to the Clover Park one because I was here for our Planning Commission meeting. But what was interesting to me, Harrison Prep, $3.1 million in scholarships. Lakes High School, $3 million in scholarships. So, we, we have young people that are, you know, Dennis always gets on me about nuts talking about achievement. When, when you pulling down those kind of dollars, there's some people that are really setting the mark on what they're doing, and so it was very, very encouraging to me to see that. I wish I knew the number for Clover Park. I do not know. I'll get that and send it over. Are there any questions?
Questions from Mr. Wagaman. Thank you very much. Appreciate the update.
Thank you.
We now move to the public comment section of the agenda. This is when any member of the public may speak to any issue of interest to the council and the city, whether or not it is on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds to go. The red light comes on when your time is up. Please, please identify yourself by name and city of residence, such as Jason Whalen, Lakewood, Washington. I would note, however, that we have a, a public hearing on Adult Family Home Moratorium later, though you may speak to that issue in public comment. You're, if you want to have your comments of record on the public hearing, you can wait till the public hearing, and that is for that single subject, and then your comments will be on record. The first person we've had to sign up for public comment is Mr. Dennis Halgen.
Dennis Halgen, Lakewood, Washington. This is a little bit about the last meeting. It was very refreshing to hear two councilmen mention the Constitution as the reason for not voting for marijuana and liquid, and recognizing when it's your authority to make a decision and when it's not. And of course, what's left out in the discussion now on cannabis, marijuana, whatever you want to call it, is jobs, and, and companies, more and more are asking for drug tests. And so many people, this isn't mentioned, so as many people go out and have a marijuana thing with a little drinking, and of course, the alcohol is gone, and then they get a call from an employer that says, hey, we need you. Some application needs to put in. Well, that's the end of a career right there in a lot of cases. The other thing that I was very pleased to hear, in 1995, it put on a program for, for Rotary on Wenatchee Sex Scandal, which really wasn't a sex scandal. It was about CPS taking children without cause and false accusations in court and whatnot. Then it brought in hundreds of reporters watching these, watching these trials. And I had people over here from several, several news, such as Dorothy Rubinowitz in The Wall Street Journal, Kathy Lyon. Dorothy didn't want her to speak, but she couldn't come over here, but Kathy Lyon, and it was really, what it left the conclusion was, they defined in those years, 1992 to 1995, the DSHS is a deep state, a bureaucracy that can't be controlled by politicians. And now we have it. We're supposed to be helping vulnerable people in Oak Brook, and what do you got? DSH putting predators in there. And in many cases, getting predators from out of state and even out of the country. And then we heard from Lieutenant Governor of Texas, very clearly stating the facts on illegal immigration and illegal immigrants who commit crimes of what it cost the state, 600,000 cases. Now, everybody wants to hear that kind of information to make decisions if they have any common sense at all. And of course, they will be fighting, those three states, New Mexico, Arizona, and, and Texas will be fighting hard against California, Washington, and Oregon, who don't gather or compile data so they can't debate because all they got, they stand there and they don't know anything.
The next person who signed up to speak is Mr. Glenn Spieth.
Glenn Spieth, Lakewood. I have somewhat of an announcement. Some of you already know, but the Lakewood History Museum is going to be moving, hopefully within this next six months to a year. And we're moving into the Old Terrace Restaurant and Lakewood Theater Lobby, and we will have about six to seven times the space, and we'll be in a rather historic venue to start with because the Terrace Restaurant has been well-known for many years. Second thing that I had to say is the study session hearing problems, I hope will be repaired by next week, but I will bring my hearing aid just in case because the last study session was even worse than some of the previous ones. You might get some instructions on how to use those table mics. However, I don't think they're a good solution either. But really need to move the speakers because that's why you got feedback, and that's why it can't get loud enough. If you remember the sound system at Harrison Prep, that was a sound system. So, big speakers pointed away from the microphones, I think will work better for this room. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty reading the, the next. I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty reading the next speaker's name. It is to speak on Lakewood Senior Activity Center. I saw Elizabeth out there, who's the designated speaker.
Can't read my writing. I didn't know anybody was going to read it. I'm part of this rough crew over here from the Lakewood Senior Center. And we would like to thank the mayor and the council for supporting the Lakewood Center. And we'd like to invite you to our open house, which is Thursday, June 7th, from 10 to 1. The Lakewood Senior Center is just filled with treasures. We have many, many classes. My name is Janet Rich, and I have been participating at the center for over 12 years. I started with a writing class and took wood carving and photography and computer. And I don't have time to take all the classes, but they're wonderful. And now, I am now leading the writing class, and I'm serving on the advisory committee. And I would like to thank you for supporting Lakewood's secret Fountain of Youth. This is the greatest place ever, so I hope you stop by. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to sign up is Joanna Henry. But Ms. Henry has indicated she wishes to speak about adult family homes. If you wish to stay for the public hearing, I'll put your name on that list. But you can speak now if you wish.
I'm Joanna Henry. I live in Oak Brook, and we have been here approximately 30 years. My husband retired from the military here, and we stayed. Within four days of coming here, we came to Oak Brook, fell in love with it, bought a house, and made it our home. In meantime, over this 30 years, what we loved so much and still love seems to be experiencing a slowly but declining quality of surroundings, quality of life. And one of those things, one of those concerns are adult family homes out there. Now, I'm coming out of the medical field. I'm a registered nurse, have worked very long in this possession, and certainly care for people and for their care. But what I have seen out there in some of those family homes does not come up to what is to be expected and what should be. I have visited some of these homes out there for various reasons, visiting some patients, and have found that the staffing problem sometimes is truly bad. Sometimes for six patients of great needs, sometimes it's one person, which is certainly not enough. In addition to that, I have seen language problems that I would not want to have any of my family in some of these places, because the personnel that is there sometimes speaks so poorly English that I don't know if the patients can understand. And if a patient has a problem to speak, I don't know if they can be understood by the personnel. This is a great big concern of mine's. DSH, I have called DSHS years ago, called city council first and was told us, "You have no authority in all of this. It's Olympia." I called DSHS, and they said, "Well, you know, they do what they can, and this is all rightfully there, and I should not have any problem with it." I don't know where DSHS, what the criteria is to open these homes, and what the criteria is for the oversight. Because some of the things that I have seen, there seems to be no oversight. And some of those problems are just, need to be corrected. I don't know what training the staff has when they start working there, or if anybody ever comes to visit and check things out if they are still up on par where they should be. Any problems, or these problems, any solutions you can help us find would be greatly appreciated, because I think we truly have a problem there. Thank you.
The next person to sign up is Jackie Hunt.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a point of order. I'm assuming that Mrs. Henry did not understand your directive. That comment cannot be part of the public hearing unless, when we open that hearing, there's a directive from the council to append it into the hearing. And I would strongly encourage people who are here to talk about adult family homes, there is a specific hearing that forms a record for later process. And if you don't testify within the confines of that hearing, we don't have a record to work with later. And it's a benefit to everyone that we have a clear record. So it was just my impression that she meant that.
Ms. Henry is also on the list for a public hearing. But I would repeat that for Ms. Hunt, who's the last person to have signed up, I believe it's Jackie Hunt.
So you suggest that I not speak tonight? I come to that hearing.
No, the hearing is in a short time. It's later in the agenda.
Oh, so I should save my comment?
Yes. So I'll place your name on the list for the public hearing. So that's all the people who signed up for public comment, which is on any subject. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward to speak in public comment? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in public comment? Seeing none, I declare public comment closed. We move to consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the City Council's special meeting of May 21, 2018. B, approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting of May 21, 2018. C, approval of the minutes of the City Council's study session of May 29, 2018. D, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,366,860.59 for the period of April 16, 2018, through May 15, 2018. E, approval of claim vouchers in the amount of $2,101,153.99 for the period of April 14, 2018, through May 17, 2018. F, Resolution Number 2018-05, amending the fee schedule relative to building permit fees. G, Resolution Number 2018-06, authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the Recreation and Conservation Office for angle lane trail improvements, Harry Todd waterfront improvements Phase II, and Phase II aquatic land enhancement account projects. H, Motion Number 2018-28, authorizing the execution of a real estate purchase and sale agreement with 107th Street Building LLC in the amount of $1,140,000 for the Tactical Taylor Properties. I, Motion Number 2018-29, authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with White and Smith Planning and Law Group in the amount of $79,600 for the JBLM Land Exchange Business Plan through December 31, 2018. And J, items filed in the office of the city clerk. One, Community Service Advisory Board meeting minutes of April 18, 2018. Two, Lakewood Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of April 23, 2018. And three, Planning Commission meeting minutes of May 2, 2018.
I commend you on your first effort. After 23 years of Ms. Bush running through the consent agenda, you followed up her efforts with a great one of your own. So, thank you. Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hold on, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. We now move to the regular agenda. The first item is public hearings and appeals. This is the date set for a public hearing relative to a moratorium on the filing of applications for licenses, permits, and approvals of any adult family home, group home, enhanced services facility, or comparable business in residential zones in the city of Lakewood. For this, we have Ms. Walker. And I would just like to emphasize for the audience, in case there's a misunderstanding, that this public hearing, which is, when you testify, will be on a single topic, is on the topic of a moratorium. It's not a ban, it's not anything that affects the adult family homes, which are licensed and operating in Lakewood. It is a moratorium with respect to new facilities. Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, Heidi Ann Walker, City Attorney for the city of Lakewood. The city has struggled with options with regard to this topic, and I would echo what the mayor has said. The purpose of the moratorium is to pause an increase in this type of business so that the city can thoughtfully develop. Essentially, a moratorium is not a permanent ban. We are pursuing a court-ordered moratorium on the state grant of licenses for adult family homes for violation of state law and danger to the community. That's a separate action. This moratorium is the state's authorization to cities to pause development when it's deemed appropriate and necessary. The moratorium that the council has passed is the initial moratorium. It requires a public hearing, such as you are holding tonight. The findings adopted tonight, we will be putting into writing and having the council review to make sure that they are accurate, because the number of findings in this case exceeds what we typically see in a moratorium. Based on the research that the staff has been able to do, I would submit the following proposed findings to be adopted. I'm not going to reiterate the words "proposed finding" as I give you these number of findings to open this public hearing. Number one, while the city of Lakewood is one of 23 cities within Pierce County, 31% of adult family homes are located within its jurisdictional boundaries. Number two, as of May 2018, there are 266 adult family homes in Pierce County, and 77 of those are located in the city. Number three, of the 77 adult family homes in the city, 35 of those are located in the Oak Brook neighborhood of our city. Number four, the state attempted, in the fall of 2017, to place or otherwise release at least one resident in an adult family home after that resident has spent most of his adult life at Western State Hospital, has a history of violence, including murder and assault, and is documented to be at a risk of future danger to himself and others, even when compliant with medications. Number five, defendant, Western State, or, I'm sorry, Western State Hospital violated RCW 7105-280 when it failed to provide review by the Public Safety Review Panel of the planned release of that previously described killer. Number six, the state, through Western State Hospital, DSHS, and ALTA, the Aging and Long-Term Services, is aware, or should be aware, that at least four registered sex offenders have been placed or conditionally released into an adult family home in a residential neighborhood in the city, namely Woodville Adult Family Home. Number seven, Mr. Chapel, one of the four, was convicted of rape with force and threat in December of 1983, and kidnapping in the first degree in August of 1984. He's reportedly disabled. Number eight, Mr. Benson, one of the four, pled guilty to second-degree child molestation in November of 2014. Number nine, Mr. Jordan, another one of the four, has two convictions for possessing child pornography, one in 2002 and another in 2015. Number 10, Mr. Tansey IV of the four, was convicted of child molestation in the third degree in the year 2000, possession of drug paraphernalia in 2000, assault in 2000, and criminal trespass in 1999 and 2013. Number 11, even the previously described killer and the registered sex offenders identified above may be described, even if they were described as vulnerable pursuant to the adult family home statute, they do not otherwise fit the criteria for residents of an adult family home, because they require far more than personal and/or special care pursuant to RCW 70128010. Number 12, adult family homes are not required to have and do not have the staff, resources, or secure facilities needed to accommodate residents like registered sex offenders who have a history of violence and/or predation. Placement of registered sex offenders in adult family homes is a foreseeable risk to the safety and security of other adult family home residents, current and prospective, and the general public. Number 13, publicly available documents about Woodville Adult Family Home, however, do not disclose the fact that four registered sex offenders reside in the home. Number 14, defendant Woodville, I'm sorry, Woodville Adult Family Home has violated statutory requirements for adult family homes by admitting registered sex offenders into their home, because such admissions are inherently unsafe. By state law, registered sex offenders pose a risk of reoffending. Number 15, by releasing, placing, and/or facilitating the placement of the sex offenders in the Woodville Adult Family Home, Western State Hospital, the Department of Social and Health Services, and Aging and Long-Term Care Services have failed to properly care for them as mentally ill citizens of the state and have failed to properly license and/or regulate the home. Number 16, the placement by Western State Hospital, DSHS, and ALTA of the previously described killer and the registered sex offenders fit the admission criteria for enhanced services facilities in that they have a history of violence and/or predation and/or otherwise meet the admission criteria of RCW 7097030. Number 17, the city has attempted to learn if Western State Hospital, DSHS, and/or ALTA has made or intends to make other such placements like the above referenced placements through a public records request pursuant to Chapter 4256 RCW. Number 18, one document produced in response to our records request is a matrix which demonstrates that residents, even if given the exact same classification, are shown to have been placed alternatively in adult family homes, enhanced services facilities, and inpatient hospital care, which are vastly different facilities from each other, rendering such classifications on the matrix meaningless for purposes of placement and treatment. Number 19, Western State Hospital, DSHS, and/or ALTA have ignored the substantially different admission criteria for these facilities by placing those with a history of violence and/or predation into adult family homes. Number 20, Western State Hospital, DSHS, and/or ALTA have placed and/or may potentially place those with a history of violence and/or predation in communal living groups with residents who are considered by the state statute to be vulnerable to abuse, and have done so without ensuring that proper staffing and facilities are provided. Number 21, the city has attempted to resolve this matter through meetings with DSHS officials, our legislators, and attorneys representing the state. Attempts to work through city concerns have met with denial at best, and more typically, vilification. Denial that placement of a diagnosed psychotic killer in a home intended for vulnerable adults is inappropriate or a mistake. Denial that there is a process for rendering sex offenders no longer dangerous, and that disability does not alleviate predation. And vilification of the citizens living in these residential neighborhoods as discriminatory for insisting that adult family homes house only the vulnerable population intended and not be used as extra beds that Western State Hospital needs. Number 22, the moratorium is necessary because of a lack of transparency, and the information provided so far shows that discharges into the adult family homes violate state law. Number 23, this rises to the level of urgency due to the evidence of dangerous placements in violation of law and the lack of further information. Number 24, during the period of the moratorium, we are pursuing a moratorium on the state licensing our state lawsuit. Number 25, during the period of the moratorium, we will continue to attempt to work with the state. And number 26, homestretch, during the period of the moratorium, we will develop a plan to implement legislation at the state and local level. Those are the facts that we have been able to determine so far that I would submit to you for adoption, that we would then put into writing. However, you have yet to hear from the many people who have signed up for the public hearing, so I will cede the podium to them.
Thank you. We'll now move to public testimony at the public hearing. When I call your name, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll be allowed three minutes per person. Please note that, like in the public comment session, the yellow light comes on with a 30-second warning. Red light comes on when your time is completed. The first person who has signed up to speak on the subject of a moratorium on the filing of applications for licenses, permits, and approvals of any adult family home, group home, enhanced services facility, or comparable business in residential zones in the city of Lakewood, is Guy McFadden.
Thank you. My name is Guy McFadden. I've been a resident of Oak Brook for 31 years, 6901 Turquoise Drive Southwest. As I've stated previously at your planning commissions and things like that, the board, I'm a member of the Oak Brook Fourth Edition Homeowners Association Board. We have discussed this issue, and we fully support what the city is doing. We feel you're making a reasonable attempt to address a very complex issue, the need for adult family homes, but at the same time, addressing the concerns of the residents of Oak Brook. We feel this moratorium is going to help you responsibly address concerns and issues recently raised by the attorney and the people who have spoken here before. So, thank you for doing this, and keep up the good work.
Next person signed up to speak is Mr. Bob Fulmer.
Thank you, my name is Bob Fulmer. I live at 7102 Sapphire Court Southwest in Oak Brook. Moved to Oak Brook because I enjoyed the sense of community, the residential neighborhoods, and the camaraderie. and the camaraderie. I am personally concerned about what is turning into be a safety issue. I totally support the moratorium. There is nothing I can say more eloquently than what the city attorney stated in the 23 statements of fact as to why a moratorium needs to exist. This area has to be studied, has to be looked at. It needs to have some sense brought into it before it gets any worse than what it is now. I totally support your efforts and I thank you very much for them.
Next person signed up is Kimberly Neal.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Neal. I live at 7102 Sapphire Court Southwest, and I'm new to Oakbrook. I've lived in Pierce County my whole life, but Bob and I are just getting married, and so I am concerned about what's happening here. And so I hope that the council will take this with to heart and really consider spacing out the number of homes we have. When we drive in, coming into Oakbrook, and you come along Onyx, and you come around Coral, and then go back to Sapphire, it seems like we're passing at least a dozen homes that are adult family homes. It just seems too concentrated to me. Part of the problem I see is I think you lose the community. I realize we need adult family homes as we have a lot more older people, but when people -- when it's a business, you don't have the mingling in the neighborhood. You don't have the sense of community when you have too many placed that close together. So, I would support your efforts in trying to come up with a plan that will make it better for everyone. Thank you.
The next person who's signed up is Mr. John Ficker. Mr. Ficker, I recognize that you represent a group, a number of whom have signed in but are not speaking. You'll be allowed 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, my name is John Ficker, and I am the Executive Director at the Adult Family Home Council. We at the Adult Family Home Council share many of the concerns that you have raised. I know that the safety and the well-being of residents, as well as the local community, is of paramount importance to every adult family home provider that I have ever had the pleasure of working with. We also share your frustration with getting accurate, meaningful, and timely information from the Department of Social and Health Services. I routinely tell my providers that we have an unfortunate relationship where we are dependent upon the bureaucrats for oversight, but bureaucrats often make very challenging partners. Most of the adult family homes do not serve the types of residents that you have stated have brought you to the need to do this moratorium. Matter of fact, it's a very small percentage of homes that serve this kind of challenging population. No adult family home by law can admit or retain a resident that they do not believe that they can keep safely within the facility. In addition to -- excuse me. In addition to believing that your moratorium may be in violation of several federal and state statutes, we are also concerned that it's the wrong tool to address the concerns that you've expressed. We believe that it's a sledgehammer when what would be more appropriate is a scalpel. I know of at least, or approximately, a dozen citizens living here in the city of Lakewood, property owners, who have been developing their homes to become adult family homes that are currently in that licensing preparation part. And those individuals have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars into their homes and into making proper modifications to create ramps or widen doorways or make bathrooms more accessible for the elderly and frail individuals that they serve. Unfortunately, the moratorium that you've placed puts them at a disadvantage to being able to complete the licensing process if they can't get a building inspection and appropriate city business licenses. None of these homes have any stated concern that they intend to serve the population that worries you. And their damage is current, it's real, and it's ongoing. Lastly, and I think what's been most disappointing is that nowhere in this process has the council set an opportunity to invite adult family home providers to come and talk with you. At no point am I aware of that there's been any kind of community conversation. And instead of taking a unilateral action, I would really encourage you to meet these providers and to see these homes and to know what's going on. I've heard a lot of misinformation through the course of these meetings about what kind of training is required, what kind of licensure process an individual has to go through, and who are the intended individuals to be served. I can understand from the reading of the RCW where you get to where you get. However, I think that there's a much more complex and a much more robust ability for the state to do appropriate oversight, as well as to ensure that all of these providers have an adequate amount of training. I was also very concerned when, two weeks ago, during the city council meeting, we heard the mayor mention specifically that up until recently, he wasn't aware of who was even operating an adult family home. So I really want to encourage you to take the time to do that before you consider placing so many of these individuals in a hardship. And lastly, you mentioned, or it was mentioned earlier, that none of this moratorium would have any negative impact on existing adult family homes, and that is inaccurate. If an adult family homeowner is in the process of wanting to close, or transfer, or even change their own business structure, they have to go back through the state of Washington through a change of ownership application. And inability to get a proper building inspection, or an inability to get appropriate business licenses, could jeopardize their ability to make that transition of the property and of the business. And for many adult family home providers who don't have a 401K account, or most of -- I mean, 80% of the clients that are being served are Medicaid-funded residents, so there's not a lot of money. I think there's an assumption that there's all this money flowing into these adult family homes, but the Medicaid rates are challenging. I'm working right now with the department to try to negotiate better rates for the individuals, especially if they want to move individuals out of Western State and into adult family homes, then they have to supply meaningful, realistic staffing dollars to ensure that safety. And until they do that, I'm with you in that -- excuse me, an individual being discharged from Western State Hospital without appropriate authority is a mistake by the Department of Social and Health Service, and I tell my providers it would be a mistake for them to accept an individual like that unless they knew that they could guarantee the safety. So I ask you to take a look at the core of the problem and look at the solution that you're using, and I would encourage you to consider a more pointed and more directed approach to try to solve this issue and to work with the providers as opposed to working against them. Because I know from speaking to many of them that they don't understand what your concerns are because there hasn't been any episodes or instances that any of us are aware of. And then the report that I remember getting from you last May, I saw that there were no known increases or challenges resulted directly to the adult family homes. And it was only this one story that happened over the summer, or maybe a little farther back than that, where they were trying to move that gentleman out of Western State Hospital, which we agree was a bad idea, and we're glad it was stopped, and we appreciate your efforts. But please don't take away the property rights and the business rights of these individuals that are trying to do the right thing for the people in their community. Thank you very much for your time.
The next person who's signed up is Joanne Henry. You wish to make a comment, or we could move to adopt your prior comments as part of the record? Just approach the mic. So I'll just caution you that your prior comments then will not be on the record, so go ahead.
Yes, well, they will not be on the record then. I'm sorry about that. But again, I'm not good in public speaking, but this is near and dear to my heart, and I haven't been here two weeks ago. At the last meeting, I was out of town, and so I was really looking forward to tonight. As Mr. Ficker said, I fully understand and hear what he is saying, but please place some of these homes somewhere else than Oakbrook. You know, the need is there, and all this, this is fine, but do they have to be like a slow flood just overrunning the whole residential neighborhood out there? And this is what it seems to be. Where does that leave the rights of the residents? We came there to live in a community, in a residential neighborhood, and it is changing. It is changing big time with 30-plus homes being there and new ones being applied for and reopened. I'm sorry, I get very angry when I hear this because we have rights to the people that live there and have moved there for the atmosphere of the residential. There also is a little concern on my part for the criminal elements that are coming in. I myself have been standing there with my son, who lives right across from a newly opened family home. He said, "Then, Mom, wait a minute, I'm watching something here. Something is going on that's not right." And a small truck had been pulled into the parking lot of that family home. One visitor went into the home, probably to visit a family member. Two other young men went down the street, and then they come running back with packages. They had robbed, they had collected mail and packages of porches of the home. My son automatically called the police, and they came out. These were people coming from Kent or Auburn or somewhere. A family member was in one of these homes, and they came with a family member down here and cleaned out packages of the neighborhood. These are things that would not be possible, I think, if there's just an element coming in that should not be there and is detrimental to what we have chosen to live in this neighborhood for. So please help us. This moratorium is very good, but it's only beginning. I hope there will be more strength to protect us. Thank you very much for everything you can do.
The next person who's signed up is Millie Ohieno.
Mayor and the council, thank you for giving us this opportunity for the public hearing. I'm a very proud adult family homeowner. I have a Bachelor's of Education in Home Economics and an MBA in Healthcare Management, so I think I'm very well qualified to run the adult family home. And I would like you guys, the mayor, to take a chance and visit my home, see how it's well-run, residents are well taken care of, well-staffed, 24-hour staffing, and I specialize in senior care. So, one thing I would like to say is that I think adult family home has -- sorry, Lakewood area has been an attractive place for adult family homes, and it happens in America. Like, we have places in Florida where they specialize in retirement. Seniors like to go there. So it looks like that's what's happening in Lakewood, and maybe as the city, you should look and see, how can we take this and make it a beneficial thing to the Pierce County and to the city? Then also remember that we have invested a lot in these homes. I've seen our ombudsman here, who has visited my home many times. Come and visit and see. Some of those homes are really well-done and well-managed. So remember, it's an investment, and when we hear things happening like this, we get concerned about the investment we've put into these homes. Okay, then on issues of training and staff ratio, these are things that the state already has very strict regulations for us. So if anybody's not following that regulation, I think that is something that should be taken up between that particular adult family home and the licensing department. Then my suggestion is that the moratorium should be put on Western State and not on adult family homes. They are the ones bringing this, trying to place these people who should not be in the normal society with us in our homes. And of course, us as adult family homeowners should also vet the people we are taking in. So I would say adult family homes are a very beneficial business venture to the community, and we are, many of us are there who are very professional and doing a very good job. So please put that in mind. Thank you.
Next person signed up is Sue Stevie.
My name is Sue Stevie, and I've lived in Oakbrook for 41 years and love Lakewood and our neighborhood, and I am also board member of the Oakbrook Fourth Edition Homeowners Association. In that capacity, I'm not just speaking for myself, I am speaking for over 100 homeowners in our addition of Oakbrook. And we would like to, I would like to endorse all the comments made by Mr. McFadden. We congratulate you and thank you for calling this moratorium and looking into this problem in a systematic, hopefully, well-planned way that will assure that we can retain the quality of our neighborhoods with diverse families living there. Oakbrook needs families with young children to feed our schools. We have families of retirees, single ladies living there, families without children, all kinds of families. Unfortunately, we did have a very negative experience on Topaz Drive with one of the first adult family homes that appeared about 15 years ago. And Mr. Buhr has, I'm sure, a huge scrapbook of problems with that home. I am very pleased to say that the homes that are now near us, and we have five in the immediate area of our house, are very well-maintained. The owner seemed to be very conscientious. We have a very pleasant lady who walks up and down the street, and we greet her, and she greets us. So we would like to just make the point that we are seeking a balance, fairness in density placement, and if that can be understood, that is our one issue. Also additionally, many of us have some oversight issues on how they are maintained, and even though these are very well-maintained, we have to be very vigilant in looking after this very vulnerable population that are residing in these homes. So thank you very, very much. We hope that you will have some citizen input as you work through this moratorium. Thank you for your time.
The next person signed up is Laura Tansey.
Good evening. My name is Laura Tansey, 813 Lawson Street, and I reside in Olympia. Currently, my son is a resident in a group home here in the Lakewood area, and I would like to say that he's been there, and we are all very pleased to have him in one of these group homes. It is a very supervised and very well-cared-for. He gets very much the needs, his needs are all met, met very well in this group home, and I'm very pleased with that, and my family is pleased. We have the opportunity to visit on different occasions and in different times, and at all those times when we come to visit with him, we find that the area is very supervised with at least two or three personnel who are very aware of his situations and the things that he needs, and his needs are met. Also, he get, many get visitors from different counselors and things like that, and I've heard positive feedback from them also about the group home that he is in. The house is very well-cared-for, manicured lawns, cleanliness, and all those who live there seem to be very pleased when I talk to the other people who live there, other residents who live there, and their family members. There may be some problems in other group homes, I cannot say. I can only speak for the place where my son resides, and I'm here to say that I am very pleased with the care that he gets, I'm very pleased with the situation that he's in, and the group home that he's in has a very positive and a caring atmosphere for him. And I know of no problems or no situations that requires any negative police activity or any things like that. And I'm just here to say that I hope this continues on. I understand what's going on and maybe some that may not be, meet the criteria that you require, but I also want to say that the one that he's in, I can honestly say that he gets very good supervised care, all his needs are met. Thank you.
The next person signed up is Patricia Smith.
I'm Patricia Smith, 1933 Lighthouse Lane, Tacoma. Although I'm not a resident of Lakewood, my mother is currently a resident at one of the Woodville homes, and my father was the first resident at the first Woodville home back in 2013. From the comments that the city attorney read, Woodville was really vilified, and I want to say that the impression given is not the Woodville that I know. My mother gets excellent care, my father got excellent care. I am at the home often during the week with my father, family members, where there are probably five days out of the week because we all live here in Tacoma, the Tacoma area. They take excellent care of the residents. Their people that work with the residents are all licensed by the state. Some of the care workers, when we first, when Some of the care workers, when we first, when my father was first there, once licensed, it became a rule that everybody had to be a CNA-licensed. They had to let some people go that we really liked, but they didn't, their English was not good enough to pass the test, so they had to be let go. The care workers there, one of the women spoke earlier that sometimes it's hard to understand them, and that's true, sometimes it is hard to understand them. But the residents, sometimes the residents are hard to be understood too. A lot of them have dementia like my mother does, and she's really hard to understand. She really wants a smile and a hug and someone to take care of her physical needs, and that's what she gets. That's what we want for our elderly residents. We want them to be well-cared-for. In the larger facilities, they may have one person for 10 residents. At the adult family homes, there are two to three caregivers for six residents. They get excellent care. I just can't say enough about it. When my mother needed an adult family home, I called Woodville. That was where I wanted her, that was where my father was, and that was the place we wanted for my mother. So I know that some of the homes may not be as well cared, taken care of as Woodville is, but I'm really sorry that you've singled them out to be kind of the bad guys in this thing, because you're wrong, they're not.
Next person is Jackie Hunt.
Thank you. I have notes on both sides since I was going to speak earlier and now, so I'm not exactly sure what I'm going to say. I'm Jackie Hunt, I live in the Seventh Edition of Oak Brook. I'm also a member of the board. We certainly support and applaud the moratorium. We thank you for taking a look at our adult family homes. I've lived there 37 years, have enjoyed a nice neighborhood. I still have a nice neighborhood. But as one of the ladies said, it's a fairness of balance, enough is enough. I, when I drive through Zircon, Zircon and Coral going to the post office, I know of, I pass seven homes that I know of, and that balance is not right. I have an adult family home, a new one, next to me, and I have made friends with the owner, and I consider us to be neighbors. The home is not full yet. I'm on the downside of traffic, I don't see the traffic coming in, but there are, as the lady said, visiting, the family members seven days a week. If there are seven, if there are six in there that get visitors, that's six. There are delivery people, of course, the ambulances and the emergency equipment, the traffic is great. People across the street tell me at midnight, which must be shift change, that there's all kinds of activity. And if you're light sleepers, you notice that. Now, my deck and the deck of the house next door are very close, the ramp is built on the side. The ramp is about four inches from my fence, which probably isn't legal, but I'm not going to fight that. I don't know what we're going to see as the summer goes on with her residents on the deck and my family on the deck. I was going to talk about a resident who had sent a complaint to the homeowners association about the covenants and hoping there was something that we could do. And I visited with her yesterday, and we had a nice conversation. Many bad things there, in that she's had a confrontation with the owners, four people appeared on her doorstep one Sunday morning. The parking does not allow her to get out of her driveway easily. What brought her complaint is there are motorhome now, or recreational vehicle parked there, which is against our covenants, and our covenants are pretty tight. So we can handle that part of it, but she wanted us to know how things were for her. Thank you.
That's all the people who've signed up to testify at the public hearing. If there's anyone else who wishes to testify at the public hearing, please come forward and queue up behind the podium.
Dennis Alvin, Lakewood, Washington. Well, I've been watching DSHS for 20 years, and I can give you some reading material that I just brought, I've got other books. One thing I learned from these people, very credible lawyers, reporters, pastors that studied the Wenatchee thing, who tried to go to Olympia and get some help. DSHS is a huge bureaucracy, has hundreds of lawyers and lobbyists that pester lawmakers constantly. They get their way, and when they're accused of something wrong, it is unbelievably difficult to deal with them. So I suggest that you seek some help from the federal government. I'm sure there's some federal money going into DSHS, you know, come in at one more angle. Heidi did a great job. But, see, the thing is, yes, DSH has regulations, but it's a bureaucracy. That does not mean that they follow their regulations. It does not mean that they enforce their regulations. What I see here is there's good people come to put up a house for vulnerable people, and they follow the regulations, not because DSHS enforces them, but because they're just good operators. But then you also have the bad operators that come in. That's where DSHS will fail, and they'll fail miserably. It's probably what I call the prime deep state bureaucracy. They control the politicians, they control, and I've brought many, much stuff, you know, about the lobbyists that bureaucracies have. Why do they need lobbyists? And, you know, some of the, well, about the way they give away food stamps. You know, I gave you the thing labeled infantilism. So there's a lot of people coming into the state that are coming here for the benefits, and even out of the country. Well, I don't see that those people are our responsibility to serve. Our responsibility to serve is the citizens of the United States, not the illegal citizens who have committed crimes or don't follow our regulations. Anyway, one good book that I just, Dorothy Robinowitz, Wall Street Journal, Kathy Lyon, Witch Hunt.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm Bob Miller, I'm the president of the Fourth Edition Homeowners Association. And I was here and spoke last time, and we support the moratorium. And I'd like to correct what Sue said, Sue Stevie said. We don't have 100 homes, we have 364 homes. And out of those 364 homes, when I spoke, excuse me, when I spoke last time, we had 17 adult family homes. That's two weeks. In two weeks, we now have 19. Not only that, but we talk about regulations and following regulations, and you guys do the right things. That may be some of you. But there are some who modify their homes without permits. Now, that's, you know, regulations are all well and good, as long as you follow them. But when you violate the city ordinances and build without permits, that's not good either. In any case, we support the moratorium so we can get a ducks in a row and keep our residential areas residential. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Desiree Hosanna. I'm an attorney here in Washington. I have a business in Lakewood, Washington. I come before you as a representative of several members here. I am representing a number of the individuals affected. I also come before you as a member of the community who has several residents who reside in adult family homes in Lakewood. By way of background, I was formerly an administrative law judge for the state. I presided over hearings involving adult family homes for the Office of Administrative Hearings for at least nine years. And I also come before you as someone who not only has presided over hearings with respect to adult family homes, but also I have family members, as I said, in the adult family homes, and I am a guardian of light, and so I'm a mandatory reporter. My experience and those experiences of individuals who have family members within adult family homes is that these homes are run not just with the basic adult family home regulations, but they are above and beyond the requirements that are set forth by the DSHS as well as aging and disability. Specifically, in our situation, our family members are former doctors, former histokymists, and other professionals who, by virtue of their history, in some instances, require additional or higher level of services, and those needs have been met. My father-in-law died about two years ago in an adult family home after not being able to remain in our home, and we were not able to provide the services. And we've sent him to the adult family home that my aunt from California died in. So I stand before you as someone who understands and who has seen it firsthand, not just as a litigator, but as a family member. I respectfully submit to you that your city attorney has not done the diligence required to assess or to assert the regulations that are being allegedly violated here. I ask that you consider taking the homeowners, the adult family homeowners up on their offer to go into their homes. The staffing regulations, the alleged violations, the anecdotal information that's provided to you, I can tell you that in large part is not accurate. And it's not accurate because, as your own city attorney has said, they have not received information from DSHS. If you don't have the information, it's not possible for you to say that the rules have been violated. I also ask you to consider that the very individuals who stand here today and say, "Not in my backyard," are the same individuals who will probably at some point need services of an adult family home because of the issues with aging, dementia, and other issues. So this is a larger issue, and I'd ask that you not impose this moratorium. Thank you.
If you intend to speak, come and, please come up and queue up behind the speaker, so.
I'm sorry. Paul Wagaman, City of Lakewood. As I listen to this thing, the moratorium is, a timeout seems like a good idea initially. But then, when I look at it from a business perspective, when we need these services, and not everybody's as blessed as my wife and I were, we cared for my mother and our home for the last four years of her life, and it was a lot of work. And so there are people that need the services of adult family homes. And our population isn't getting younger, it's getting older, so the need is there. So my initial look is, hey, a moratorium, a little timeout wouldn't be a bad thing, but what's it going to do for the people that, we need to get the ability to keep these things going. Sitting on a school board, I'm also concerned about Western State putting folks in adult family homes. That's a big fear for me. And so initially, when I look at moratorium seems like the right thing, let's figure out how to do this in a right way that makes sense. But then I come back to the business side of it. When we start hurting people's businesses with our population getting older, I really think we need to think through this thing and say, hey, how do we make this work for all our local businesses? Because it's going to be a thing of the future, and it's going to, that need is, continues to grow. So I don't relish your position to make this final decision. I'm glad you're taking a look at it, and I wish you the best.
Mayor, council, my name's Arthur Henry. I live at 8713 Zircon Drive. I've lived here in the city for over 30 years. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak on this topic. I'd like to share that I support the moratorium, and that's been implemented. And as we seek the clarification on DSHS rules and look for an equitable solution for all parties, I recognize we need to have and display the compassion for these most vulnerable people, and there but for the grace of God go I, I may need those services someday myself. That said, these homes are effectively, seem to represent a unregulated growth industry in Lakewood. That will change the character and nature of the neighborhoods that drew them here to begin with. I've seen front yards paved in order to make room for parking, increased traffic and street parking, and none of that can be good for the residents or the neighborhood itself. Specifically, as far as the enhanced service facilities, over the past year, at least three times, I've come across people as I'm driving through Oak Brook, of people wandering, lost, leaving their facility. I've escorted some of them back, I've called police on others. Two of the occasions, they're in terror of going back to their facility. That may be the dementia speaking, it might be the care. I bring this up because ultimately, if this represents, if those people represent the care and monitoring that people in these family homes is receiving, what will we have when we have enhanced service facilities? And we have dangerous people placed in these homes that then can also wander the facility, or wander the neighborhood with kids, and people walking the streets. Just want to thank you again for this opportunity. I look forward to seeing how this is resolved, and thank you for putting the moratorium in place and giving us the opportunity to find an equitable solution for all. Thank you.
Hi, Susan Sorensen, back here again from the Oak Brook area to speak on behalf of the moratorium, as I have since November. You know, really, I think all we're asking is, or all I'm asking is, this, as it's been called, timeout, pause, to address the system that's in place right now. Again, as I've said before, and many people have said, welcome the adult family homes. But the way it's working right now, something's broken, okay? Something is broken. The fact that we do have registered sex offenders in these homes is not the intent of what they were designed for. You know, when I came in November, the first time I spoke or came to listen, there were two in one home, and now I find out there's four. We're going in the wrong direction, okay? The fact that the individual, Mr. Butterfield, as he keeps being referred to, you know, somebody thought it was okay to put him in an adult family home. Somebody at DSHS, the people who were taking him in, thought it was okay. Things are broken. They're not working the way that they are. This moratorium is a chance to get questions answered. We have legitimate questions about who is being placed there, how they're being placed there, when they're being placed there. You know, tonight, I'm hearing some finger pointing now that I hadn't heard before about, you know, who's responsible for that. I don't know who's responsible. I just know that the way it is right now, it's not working. It's not, I want, we all are asking for the safety of the people who live in the homes, the people who work in the homes, the homeowners themselves, and the neighborhood. So I'm here again tonight to say thank you for the work that's been done on our behalf and to please continue with the moratorium. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, city council. What's broken is society. Society is broken, and I understand the fear that has been expressed tonight. Yes, there are sex offenders. There are actually 77 sex offenders in Lakewood, registered. Is that scary? Yes. There's 1,142 sex offenders in Pierce County. Is that scary? There are four sex offenders registered in an adult family home. Your fear is misplaced. Your fear is misplaced. The moratorium is wrong. Clearly, society has a problem. Clearly, society has a problem. Attacking adult family homes is not the solution.
Sir, could you please state your name for the record before you leave?
Good evening. My name is Regina Wanny. I'm an Arren, and I've been a nurse for the past 33 years. I personally came to this country because I wanted maybe a change of environment. I've been in the United Kingdom for years, but I thought it was good to make a change. And I look at adult family home. Back home, I had a clinic with my husband, and we did it for years. But I look at an adult family home, not as a business to make money, but a job of the heart. And going to Lakewood, I personally thought the buildings were big, the rooms were big, they give you what you want. But the price it comes at, at $400 and something thousand, I think if I have a home around there, it should be happy to see my home is gaining some, gaining value. Adult family homes, if I have a mom today, she would be in another family home, not in a skilled facility. I've been there, walked there, I see what happened to the elderly in nursing homes. You have a small girl of 18 years, taking care of 13 residents, they don't get any care. But you go to another family home, it's a six-bed home, you get the best care you can. It's a job of the heart. I just want you to know it. It's not about making money, because you can also make money doing overtime, working two jobs. When you say adult family home, people are scared. It's like when I go out, they say, "Where do you walk?" I say, "Oh, I'm an Arren at Western State Hospital." People's eyeballs will expand. "You walk there? Do you get beat up every day?" I say, "No, I don't." So that's the misconception I see too about adult family homes. It's not every home that's going to be, that's going to have a sex offender. There are a lot of elderly people that need care, that need love. We are all too busy going to our jobs. We don't have time to give our mom a pat on the back that she so much needs. And you have somebody who is, even a family, gives her a hug every single day. I bet you your mom is happier than you think. So please reconsider your actions and know that it's a job of the heart. Thank you.
Please have word.
Rondi Johnson. I live in Lakewood. I live in Oak Brook. I've lived in Oak Brook for 50 years in my same house, and I am not against adult family homes. I am for the moratorium for, for the reason that I think they should be more equitably distributed in a community. There are four within sight of my house right now. But my reason for speaking to you is that we hear how they are part of the community and how these people deserve to be in the community, and I agree. The adult family homes in my community are not part of our neighborhood. They are isolated. You don't see any people outside, ever. The homes tend to be a little bit secretive in that when they first moved in, we went to these people and said, you know, hello, welcome to the neighborhood. Well, we're a family moving in. It was not a family moving in, it was an adult family home, which puts us a little bit on the defensive when the next one comes in. But my concern is, with all the love and how well these people are being treated, and I don't think they're being mistreated, but you don't see them outside, they are not part of the community. Our neighbors all feel we would welcome the chance, and when one of the homes around the corner had people that actually took walks and came out in the neighborhood, we all spoke to them, we all were happy to see them, we learned their names. Now, in the last six or seven years, I have not seen anybody outside, ever. I don't see anybody in the backyards when we walk down the street that goes behind us. It's not part of the community. It's an isolated business in a neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'm declaring the public hearing closed, and we'll move on to ordinances. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 688, amending Chapter 5.12 of the Lakewood Municipal Code relative to pawn shops.
For this, we have Ms. Walker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. You will be pleased to know I do not have 23 findings to offer you with regard to this ordinance. This ordinance was presented to you in a recent study session, and it is proposed to bring the pawn shop regulation in the city more up-to-date with what we're actually experiencing. And we had a thorough discussion of it during the study session. I would be happy to try and answer any questions the council may have.
Questions for Ms. Walker. Here again, I entertain a motion. Please. Moved by Ms. Barth and seconded by Mr. Simpson that we adopt ordinance number 688. Any further discussion? Will all in favor please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business coming before the council?
There's none, Mayor.
New business. Motion number 2018-30, Madam Clerk. Matt, motion number 2018-30, Madam Clerk.
Motion number 2018-20, adopting the city council's strategic plan.
For this, we have Ms. Kelly Fong.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Before you is a motion to adopt the city council goals 2018 to 2020 and the city strategic plan 2018 to 2020. The city council held two goal-setting retreats in April 2018, at which the city council identified economic development and dependable infrastructure as the two most critical goal areas for the next biennium. In particular, within these two aforementioned goal areas, the city council identified three priority sub-areas of catalyst sites, transportation, and housing. These priorities were subsequently incorporated into both the city council goals and the strategic plan to reflect the city council's priorities. These two documents will serve as the foundation of the forthcoming budget process and, as indicated in the strategic plan, as roadmap for the city's future. The strategic plan takes the city council goals and provides direction for lead departments and tentative timeframes for each strategy's respective commencement, continuation, expansion, and/or completion. To assist city departments, Appendix C lists the city strategies by departments. The recommendation from city personnel would be for the city council to adopt the city council goals and city strategic plan if the council so chooses to do so. Unless the council would like more further detailed information on these two documents, I turn them matter back to the city council.
Questions for Ms. Kelly Fong. Mr. Wayland.
Thank you very much. Lots of fine work has gone into this particular document. We spent a lot of time, as you know, on the draft. I just had a question as we go to the end of, I forget where the page is, I'll get to it though. It was where you outlined the various, I believe, goals and action steps, and there was some sort of a prioritization of them, and I was just curious as to how you came up with the ABC sort of ranking on the priorities there. I'll get a page here, through the 260 pages we had. If I can get to it here. My computer's a bit slow. All the darn pictures. Let's see here. Some of it seemed duplicative a little bit. I can't get to it. Okay, so it looks like I'm starting at 255 of our packet. Maybe it's not so much prioritization as under the strategy heading, where you've got the ABC. Does that refer to, that doesn't refer to a department, it's just a structure of the particular strategy within the objective?
So this is Appendix C, which lists the strategies by lead departments.
I believe so.
So, for example, the first page is all departments.
I was just trying to understand the method to the madness with the strategy listing by letter. For example, under 255, economic development, the objective is 1.5, then we have strategy C, and we go to public safety, and you've got objectives 3.1 through 3.4, and then it goes C, C, B, B. I was just trying to get clarity in my own mind as to what the method to the madness was.
The order went from goal, so it went economic development, dependable infrastructure, public safety, fiscal responsibility, and transparency, and then was organized by objective number, so it would be 1.1 if it had been, you know, pertinent to all departments. However, in this case, the first one was 1.5, and then it went by strategy.
Okay. I think that makes sense, but I have to kind of get it to gel, because there's a lot of stuff going on in the various iterations here. Maybe it was just me. You're usually pretty good at this, Mr. Branstadter. Did you completely get the method to the madness on it?
Mayor, on the page you're referring to, I did not grasp the significance of, I understood the strategies, and they were, I didn't understand the significance of the As, the Bs, the Cs. And where there were Cs, I didn't necessarily know where there were, was there an A or a B that I was missing that was somewhere else in the document? I thought that the page was informative without those letters. Just, I just couldn't relate to them.
So the As, Bs, and Cs correspond back to the other pages of the strategic plan. So if you look, for example, under economic development, 1.5, this should correlate with 1.5C earlier on in the strategic plan.
Okay, so for example, looking at page 249.
So, for example, if you go to page 219 of your packet. Listed on page 219, you'll see 1.5C, and that'll correspond with 1.5C listed in Appendix C.
Which matches the same thing on page 249. It's the same economic development category, just in a different iteration there.
This is a demonstration why paper does have advantages. So back, since we're on 219 now, help me out with the pluses, the infinity signs, and the press-forward button.
So on page 212, there is a legend. The press-forward button indicates start. The plus indicates increase or expand. The infinity indicates continue, and the checkered flag indicates finish.
Any emojis?
So we're going to have a flag, it looks like, on page 216, to expand utilities and community assets like sewers and libraries. We're going to finish it up in two years.
In that case, there are some tentative big projects coming that'll finish, not to say that that is completely comprehensively finished.
We can just comment, and I, again, completely appreciate all the work that's gone into this. It does match the language tweaking that we all made great effort to make and create into this document. So to the extent it's a legible document for staff, because they're getting the directive from us as the council, and you can press start or wave the flag, as the case may be, at the appropriate point, I'm all for it, as long as the public can certainly read along as well.
If there isn't already, I would suggest a key for those.
There is at the very front.
We have to keep, keep going.
You have to remember.
That's my paper thing. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Wayland, seconded by Ms. Barth, that we adopt motion number 2018-30. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I also recognize the great deal of work that staff, and in fact, we ourselves, have put into coming up with this document. I do have a, a couple of things in the document that I would like to, I think that we should adjust, to be able to go and do that. And the first has to do with, at quite a few places in the document, some places in the document, multiple places, there's a reference to neighborhood associations. For example, on page 183 of our packet, where there is, under our economic development goal. Under 1-4, there is a objective that is, and a strategy, to expand partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, neighborhood associations, and other civic groups. And the reference to partnerships and working with neighborhood associations exists in multiple places throughout the document. But I think that neighborhood associations have a very specific meaning in our history and the way that we go through. We have six, they align with police districts. Some are very active in things that we do with, others are relatively inactive. And yet, there are other places, for instance, if we were to use Springbrook as our model to look at. The neighborhood association there is essentially dead. That, but there are active neighborhood groups that we can do that. And I think that, you know, strategically, we should not be specifically looking at the established neighborhood associations, but we should be looking at neighborhood groups that we can partner with, that have ability to move forward, move us forward towards the vision, that have a, as failure groups. So, Mr. Mayor, I would move to amend the document to, so that in all places where there is a reference to neighborhood associations, that that be changed to neighborhood groups.
Sir, second to the amendment. It's been moved by Mr. Branstadter, seconded by Mr. Bulkey, that It's been moved by Mr. Branstadter, seconded by Mr. Bulkey, that we amend motion number 2018-30 to replace the word "associations" with "group" every time it appears after a neighborhood. Mr. Branstadter, you wish to speak to the amendment?
And I will, I will just speak that it's, it's not intended to be limiting or to speak negatively with the established Neighborhood Associations, but to recognize that there are other groups within the community that represent citizens that we could make, positively build relationships with and have progress going forward. And I would want, in this document, as we are speaking to staff and to the, to the public, to say that we're not narrowly feeling, feeding that you have to go through your Neighborhood Association to really be an effective partner with the city.
Is there any further discussion on the motion, on the amendment? Mr. Wayland?
I appreciate the opportunity to be inclusive on that. My only concern, and if I were to tweak the language with a friendly amendment, I would say Neighborhood Groups and Associations, because I think there are folks in some of those associations that have a sense of identity. And there are other neighborhood organizations, for example, Oak Brook IV through Oak Brook VII, that wouldn't say they're part of an association yet, although the new one that just was stood up, they probably might be part of that, but they may be more akin to a neighborhood group. So, you know, to those folks who have been historically part of associations, I wouldn't want them to lose that sense of identity, so, you know, I'm fine with that. I think I would prefer a friendly amendment to say Neighborhood Groups and Associations or something similar. That would be my comment. It's not an amendment yet, unless I think there's some consensus. Then I might make a friendly amendment.
We're still discussing your amendment.
That, 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 you know, I just find that the word "associations" to be limiting because it doesn't even, in our history, include everybody that calls themselves an association. It refers to the six groups that was established in the weed and seed process in, in our six police districts. And, you know, I have seen that there are effective groups, whether they be called Associations or have different nonprofit names, or whatever it is, that have, you know, are, are much more active to do that. I can, you know, we're, we're, we're moving forward on, on any one of a number of initiatives and have in the past that didn't come out of the associations. But if you're gonna add expansive, an amendment to make a more expansive language is kind of my intent anyway, so I'd be glad, glad to support an amendment if the deputy mayor wanted to make it.
Mr. Bulkey? Not, not to play parliamentarian, because I myself am not a parliamentarian. There's no such thing as a friendly amendment, so somebody has to withdraw their amendment and make a new amendment.
I agree. That's why I didn't make it.
There isn't, there isn't, there isn't one on the table. So, the easiest way, just foot down the amendment and start over. Call for the question on the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
Nay.
Now I entertain an amendment to the motion.
Pressed, my light is red. I would, in light of Mr. Branstadter's comment, move to amend throughout the document reference to Neighborhood Associations to include Neighborhood Groups, Groups and Associations.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Wayland, seconded by Mr. Bulkey, that we amend, universally amend the wording in motion number 2018 to change the reference to Neighborhood Associations to the words Neighborhood Groups and Associations. Is there any discussion on the motion, or amendment, Mr. Wayland?
I thank you all for being friendly to my non-friendly amendment.
Any further discussion? Call for a question on the amendment. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The amendment passes. We now move to the amended motion number 2018-30. Is there any further discussion, Mr. Branstadter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just would like to bring my colleagues' attentions to page 228. One of the key things that we wanted to accomplish as we were discussing our goals and priorities, you know, talked about metrics and dashboards and tracking indicators to be able to go through and do that. And, you know, I think we want to do that. That on page 228, there is a list of key performance indicators that are within the category of public safety. And the third indicator is worded as decrease in number and severity of abatement projects, failed safety inspections, code enforcement. That if we were talking about a strategic plan for 2030, I'd be okay with those performance indicators. But we're talking about a strategic plan for 2018 through 2020. And we have a strategy to aggress, in the other parts of the plan, we're looking to aggressively pursue abatements, aggressively pursue code enforcement. And I don't think that in those two specific things that we're, we or our citizens are looking for a decrease in, in the window where this strategic plan is. Now, with respect to failed safety inspections in the window through 2020, I do think a good indicator is decrease. So, I would look to, to amend the plan to, to, given the scope, I would look to amend the, the plan for the key performance indicators, to amend that, that particular indicator to decrease in number of failed safety inspections.
Is there a second?
Second.
I don't understand the motion.
I'm on page.
It's been moved by Mr. Branstadter. I get where it is. Are you asking to eliminate?
I'm on page 228.
Are you asking to eliminate that?
I'm asking to amend the way that the key performance indicator is stated to indicate that in that, that the decrease is, is in the number of failed safety inspections, but not, essentially deleting a, for decrease in, in abatements or a decrease in code enforcement. So, so that, that same would read, decrease in number of failed safety inspections is a key performance indicator for this two-year plan.
It's been moved by Mr. Branstadter, seconded by Mr. Simpson, that we amend the language of, under key performance indicators on page 228 of our packet, to change the words decrease in number and severity of abatement projects, failed safety inspections, code, comma code enforcement, to quote, decrease in number of failed safety inspections, end quote. Is there any further discussion? Will all in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose nay. The amendment carries. Now return to the twice amended motion, number 2018-30. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, will all in favor please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion carries. Now move to reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffield.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. I too would just like to recognize Shannon Kelly Fong for her outstanding leadership in pulling all of this together and facilitating a couple of city council retreats and then working with our leadership team to pull this together. It was quite an amazing document, and quite frankly, a first for us, and certainly sets us on the right path as, not only as we develop the 1920 biennial budget, but as we look out into the near and medium future as, as, as well.
If I was, if I was thinking ahead, I would have brought her a box of dots. Thank you.
A few updates I'd like to share, share with you this evening. The first is Pierce Transit is gonna be moving forward with a significant number of improvements after 30 years, 30 years after it opened at the 512 parking ride. They're gonna be redoing the parking lot there, some concrete improvements, curbs, gutters. The shelters are gonna all be done over, some improved lighting. And majority of that heavy work is gonna begin next week on June 11th, which means that the facility is actually gonna be closed for about four months. And Pierce Transit has identified alternative locations within Lakewood for folks to be able to park, and then the buses will go pick them up there, and they have that all available online for folks who do use Pierce Transit, Pierce Transit buses. One is at the Discount World Parking Lot, right on Pacific Highway, another at the Lakewood Transit Center, right over on the other side of our town center here, and then the back parking lot here at the Lakewood Town Center, behind Target and, and Barnes &amp; Noble Bookstore. So they'll have that up and running next, next, next week, so. As a follow-up to your planning commission meeting, your joint meeting with the Planning Commission last week, we did revise, you know, number of dates and meetings to provide more time, not just for the Planning Commission, but the council, so that process will extend into, into August. Of course, if the Planning Commission and the council needs more time, of course, you know, that can be accommodated as well, but we just wanted to let you know that we've adjusted schedules accordingly there. The City of Lakewood has been working very closely with Pierce County and a number of the partners in forming a coalition to address, you know, a lot of the concerns that we have with PSRC's Vision 2040. So to date, we've got about 11 signatories signed onto a letter, and we hope to garner support from a number of other cities and counties, particularly in the Pierce, Kitsap and Snohomish County area, as including various stakeholder groups such as Master Builders Association and the Realtors and, and, and folks alike there. So we're hoping to have something, you know, wrapped up here and pulled together in the next month or so, if not sooner. And again, the purpose there is for us, all interested parties, to speak as one voice regarding, you know, some of the concerns and issues that we have with Vision 2040. WashDOT awarded a contract, a design-build contract for the I-5 JBLM corridor to replace the two interchanges in Lakewood and Northhorn Lane in Berkeley, as well as to expand the freeway from three lanes to, to, to four lanes, all the way down to the Silicon Dupont interchange, and that work will get underway in the latter part, mid to latter part of this year. Majority of the work will take about, take about two years. WashDOT will be here at your June 18 regular meeting, just to give you an update. However, I will provide you a link to their website that provides a status on, on the project and the project scope. Next up for Lakewood is they are still working with Sound Transit to negotiate the needed right-of-way to build the connector road that would connect from Northhorn Lane to Gravely Lake Drive, so that work continues. Fort Silicon Park roadway project, so the asphalt paving will, will occur this week. Hopefully it'll all get, all get done. If you haven't been out there, it's coming together quite nicely, and I think will certainly put a sparkle on that regional gem that we, that, that we have. Likewise, the Pavilion in the Park project is moving forward, and the goal and objective there is that that, that facility be open and operational for Summerfest on July, on July 14th. And our partners, the Rotary Club of Lakewood, are doing a phenomenal job in, in, you know, stepping up and meeting their requirements, including having a number of work parties scheduled to do some in-kind services such as painting and things along those lines, and a bunch of landscaping and things along those lines. The sewer funds, I know I reported to you last week, I think it was last week or the week before, that for about a year or so, we've been planning on using a small portion of those funds to drive sewers into Fort Silicon Park. So our new Public Works Engineering Director politely reminded me that the code does not allow that. It can only be used for sewer extension projects in the Tillicum and what was formerly known as the American Lake Gardens neighborhood, now Woodbrook. So we're gonna go back and take a look at that and see what kind of changes that we can propose and bring back to this body, not just to allow for, you know, sewers to come into Fort Silicon Park, and it would serve, you know, the Pavilion, it would serve a future barn renovation project. We have a maintenance facility out there, and then we also have a caretaker home, so more to come on that. The other area that we wanna take a look at is we look at a land swap with JBLM, making sure that our ordinance would allow for the extension of sewers in the Woodbrook neighborhood onto hopefully that future part of Lakewood to accommodate, you know, sewer, sewer there as well. So again, more, more, more to come on that, and I apologize for the confusion. Your council con, your council calendar, actually, your council calendar, we just received notification that the prosecuting attorney, Mark Lindquist, will not be able to attend your next study session on June 11, to give you an update on high priority offenders. He's asked to be rescheduled to your August 27 study session, so if you don't see him next week, that's, that's why. As relates to your calendar, tomorrow at 11:00, I think the official ribbon cutting will be about 11:15, but we're gonna kick off the 2018 Lakewood Farmers Market with the, with our opening day. As you heard earlier this evening, the senior center is gonna have their annual open house, and if you have an opportunity to drop by there and see all that they do, it's, it's pretty cool stuff. And so it's from 10, that's from 10 to 1 on, on, on Thursday. Next week, a week from Thursday, on June 14th, we'll be holding our annual developer forum, and we have a very exciting agenda there. And then, as we look out into June, the latter part of June, we have the AWC Annual Conference in Yakimaun. I know myself and Councilmember Branstadter will be attending that. Does anybody else in the council that would like to attend, please let us know, and we'll get you, get you squared, get you squared away there. It's from June 26 to the 29th. The bulk of the program is on the 27th and the 28th, which is a Wednesday and a Thursday, including the board meeting, which is in the afternoon of the 28th. So with that, that's my report, Mayor.
Any questions for the city manager? Mr. Wayland? Two questions. On your report on the letter that's being drafted and circulated on the 2040 or 2040 Concerns, Vision 2040?
2050.
2050, rather. Is that something that we will get a chance to see before it gets circulated too widely?
I have circu, I've provided a copy to you.
Okay.
Certainly if you have any feedback or comments, let us know.
Okay. Was that recently?
Today.
Got it. And then on the, some of the public comment today, I wouldn't mind through you or Brianna accepting the invitation to tour a few of the selected adult family homes in Oak Brook. I don't wanna do it directly. I think I need to do it through staff to do that, because I don't want them to, you know, just be accommodating to me only. I want it to be more official. So they can select, you know, Ficker can select two or three or whatever, but I wouldn't mind going to look at a couple of them.
Okay.
Especially the one that extended the invitation. Sure.
Any other questions? We'll move to council comments. Ms. Moss?
We'll move to council comments. Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In reference to the adult family homes, I think there's still a, I don't know how we can distill the difference between what we're trying to do and what some are perceiving our abilities to do. We are not trying to do the things that they feel like we're trying to do. If you're doing the right thing, it's not going to apply to you. So if there's a way that we can clarify that with the people that are concerned and misunderstanding, I would like to see that happen, however we can do that. On Saturday, I think the memorial service for our beloved Dr. Claudia Thomas was well done. I think the celebration was exactly what she would have appreciated because that's the way she lived her life, enjoyed families and friends getting together. So I think that was good. We will miss Alice, but Brianna, welcome. You're doing a good job. Thank you. And yesterday I did the welcoming ceremony for the second annual You Matter Five K slash Half Marathon. And it was well done. It was a lot of fun. I think it's something that we would like to see continued and I will be working to try to make that happen. And I just wanted to say the construction of Silicon Boulevard and Ardmore, it looks absolutely wonderful. So it was a challenge, but it's paying off. So thanks.
Mr. Wookiee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Friday night, I went to the Nourish Food Bank Annual Auction. It was at the bicentennial pavilion. They do a lot of work here. They actually supply the food bank here over on Silicon Boulevard, right where the construction is. That's one of theirs. They also have a mobile food bank that they indicated that they, that also comes through Lakewood, although I didn't get a chance to speak to anybody as to where it might go. And then Dr. Thomas's memorial services was very nice. And I would agree with Councilmember Moss that they painted the lines today. So it looks nice and it's a little bit different arrangement, but it works. At least, you know, it did when I came here tonight. So and I'm looking forward to the lights being put in because then we'll have the dual turn lane that I'm looking forward to coming off Ardmore. So good progress on that. I went through the, but I'm already getting questions from the youth council, by the way, to show you how concerned they are about things. How long is it going to take to do that Gravely Lake project? And I said, well, I drove through there yesterday and I'm guessing a long time. So the good news is it's summertime and they'll hopefully get a lot of work in, so.
You think, you get your questions, I'm getting those questions. Mr. Branstad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would echo the comments that Dr. Thomas would have been very approving and happy with the event on Saturday to be able to go and do that. You know, something that was focused on the positive, was not overly officious. And I think, you know, is entirely suitable. I did attend the Flood Control Zone District Advisory Committee. And there we received a briefing from the ranking civilian in the Seattle District of the Corps of Engineers. And he was there and he informed us that the cost benefit of the costs to do a flood, major flood control series of projects in the Poallop watershed, benefit ratio didn't meet the criteria for the Corps of Engineers to follow through with that, which meant that there is going to be significantly less funding available to assist Pierce County to be able to move forward and do some of those projects that are there because they all now have to be disaggregated and become standalone projects. And it's a problem. That, you know, it took them five years to decide that the cost benefit ratio didn't meet their requirement to be able to go forward to do that and it's really disappointing. It's also disappointing that when they looked at the benefits that they considered that only seven thousand three hundred Pierce County residents would benefit from all those projects because they don't count you as benefiting if your workplace was in the flood district or into your livelihood. This is now going to be a challenge for the county council and the Board of Supervisors of the Flood Control Zone District as they look to decide now how aggressively do you want to pursue flood control work? And is what they decide going to require a change in how the supporting tax revenue for the district is collected and the rate? And, you know, there are two issues. There are the rate and there is the, will there be disparate rates by riverine divisions, the water inventory resource areas? You know, of which we are in the Chambers-Clover Creek. There's a separate one over on the other side of the Narrows. And then there is one that involves the Nisqually River and then the system of rivers that are in the Poallop watershed. And then Nisqually has some major projects on the flood control plan of development and the, but ninety percent of that work is needed in the Poallop watershed. Indications in the near term are that the Board of Supervisors is not going to look at making any changes for two thousand nineteen. But that beyond that, when they'll be able to strategically digest this Corps of Engineers decision, there are going to be discussions around that. And for us, that may well mean that it is, there's a position on that that we may need to take when we get around to crafting our county council legislative agenda. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Barth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to just add my comments about Dr. Thomas's celebration of life. I think that's truly what it was, celebration of her life. And it was kind of fun to hear some of the stories and the laughter and just revisit that. So she was quite a lady. She used to sit in this spot. I know I don't bring candy and I'm sorry. What can I say? Yeah, that's right. I share with Jason. Also, I would like to say that we will miss Alice. But congratulations, Brianna, and welcome. You'll do a good job every Monday night now. And one of the comments that was made tonight about the adult family homes and the person that said it implied that we had not done our research and that the city attorney had not done research. It's unfortunate that we can't answer that because if we had been provided the information that we requested from DSHS, we would have the research, we would have those answers. It's pretty hard to do when they tie your hands behind your back and they don't provide you with the information. So I agree with Ms. Moss. It would be nice to be able to kind of, you know, give our side of it. I know there's a fine line there and so I will leave it to the people that are much smarter than I am to bridge that gap.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to coat tail on the comments made concerning Saturday's memorial service for Dr. Thomas. You know, as I sat and listened, I didn't know her as well as some of you, although I did have the privilege of observing her for a number of years. And when her granddaughter talked about a page of history from that letter she read, it got me to thinking about a guy named David Henry Thoreau, an American essayist who wrote about, oh, seventeen hundreds. And in one of his essays, he talked about how we live our lives in quiet desperation. And I thought, he never met Claudia Thomas. And that was for me a good way to capture Saturday. There's another thing that I'd like to know, and this might speak to Councilmember Barth's lack of candy. If we could get our hands on that recipe for biscuits, I would like to see that here. And I'm sure Mr. Whalen would appreciate it very much. The other thing I'd like to conclude with is I noticed that there's some darn good roadwork that's been done also on Hipkins. And so the people down there have let me know very clearly they appreciate that very much. So Hipkins is looking good. When you turn that left turn off of Silicon, you go down Hipkins past the Jack in the Box, smooth. Thank you very much. Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Whalen.
Well, thank you very much. I echo the sentiments at Claudia Thomas's service. It was very uplifting and apropos to how she approached life, you know, unity and community. The thing I remember fondly about Claudia is that she not only was a tremendous public servant, but she was a tremendous mentor and support person for many of us. And it is representative of, I think, our own duty to someday fill our seats with people who have the desire, the heart, and the capacity to serve in this capacity. And that, to me, is what Claudia was for me. She was a mentor and a supporter when I was looking to throw my hat in the ring and serve as a public servant. And I'll never forget that, you know, that truly the table was always set at Claudia's house. And her focus to mentor and support new leadership was always set in her heart and mind as well. And she was tremendous with that. As for Andy Gurnon, former council member Andy Gurnon, she was absolutely hilarious. I told her she's got to stick around for my funeral so she can speak at it. She was tremendous and it is another, I guess, testimony to the great collaboration that Claudia facilitated with so many members in the community as well as her compatriots on the council. Coming up this week, we've got the Farmers Market, of course, tomorrow. I'll try to be there for that for the grand opening. We have the Community Engagement Leadership Team at the Clover Park School District tomorrow night. The difference tomorrow is that we will be interviewing or having an engaged conversation with a panel of folks who are actually in the trenches, doing the fine work in supporting students in both mentorship and other capacities. And we're going to ask them about the gaps that they see that exist in our community and how we can perhaps better support students and their families. And so it'll be a very interesting, hopefully, deep conversation. I'll bring back to you what I gleaned from that, so it should be good. Silicon Neighborhood Association meeting I have on Thursday night. I believe I will be able to get there. I do have another earlier meeting that day, but if I have a conflict, does anyone else plan to be there as well, just in case? So I'll probably have to make it there. I'll try to do that. The parks look great. I was out at Fort Silicon this weekend, looked at the pavilion. It's coming out of the ground. They're doing quite well. They're on task and on target again. The roadway construction looks fabulous, so the park is going to be a gem yet again for the summer. And then finally, just on the public hearing tonight, I think, you know, from my perspective, I was appreciative of all the voices. I think it was fairly well balanced. It is helpful to us to have these public hearings. As indicated, I'm going to take the invitation to go take a look at a couple of them. I'm always concerned as a lawyer litigator myself that we be careful to not overpromise and underdeliver what the community thinks we can do with this moratorium. Most of the Oakbrook comments, while well-placed, were focused on the concerns about density and changing neighborhood conditions. That's a challenge for us as a city to impact because it really is going to take, I think, a state legislative solution. So hopefully, an outcome of all this that we're doing will force that to finally happen. But a moratorium by itself won't make that happen. I think we have to be really clear about what we can and can't do and what we're trying to do nonetheless. So with that, I'm done.
Well, I must start and finish with Claudia. I too thought that the memorial tribute was most fitting. She planned it. And so it truly reflected her character. The thing that occurred to me, especially when her son Brian spoke at the end, was that, you know, spending a substantial part of her adult life as a military spouse and then being in education, she reminded me of the retired colonels and command sergeant majors that we know that always keep serving soldiers. And her commitment to youth and her service to youth and that mentorship that was mentioned never stopped. She wasn't getting paid anymore. But she continued that service for twenty-five, thirty years at a very high level. And I think that's the thing I probably value most of her legacy is that example of service. On Thursday, Mary Dodsworth and I met with Helen McGovern and Sarah Morris of the Beecher Foundation regarding their efforts to have essentially the beta test of their food education and family program operate here concentrated on Clover Park, Taiyi, and the Springbrook neighborhood. And the good news is their meeting before us was with Clover Park School District, who indicates that they're on board and going to help provide access to the schools. And the whole goal of this is a long-term change in health outcomes, which are very disparate within the community. And a lot of that's related to diet. And they've had some success at a grade school level, which can be measured by metrics, in over a hundred schools in King County, and they want to ramp that up and extend it to the families and bring in some partnerships. So this is, I think, an exciting opportunity to test that here in Lakewood. And you can put the life expectancy dots on the map and you can see that that neighborhood probably has at least a dozen years in decreased life expectancy compared to other areas in Lakewood. We honored Alice on Friday, Claudia on Saturday. Actually, at the reception afterwards, I was talking with Michelle Johnson from Pierce College. And what may not be news to you, but was news to me, that Pierce College Fort Silicon Campus was named as one of ten finalists for the two thousand nineteen Aspen Prize for Community College Excellence, one of ten in the country. And that is a prize backed by the Joyce Foundation, the Kresge Foundation, the Siemens Foundation, all heavyweights in the philanthropy world, based on student learning, certificate and degree completion, employment earnings rates after graduation, and access and success for minority and low-income students. And they are competing over the next number of months for a one million dollar prize. And there are some runner-up things, but we, of course, would certainly like to have the number one community college in the country recognized here in our backyard. I don't think, you know, our chances didn't improve when Mr. Simpson retired. The...
Maybe they did.
Maybe they did.
The data was gathered.
Yeah, the data is from his tenure, yeah. The, of course, Farmers Market's starting up again tomorrow. I'm looking forward to being there for the opening of that. My wife and I did an extensive, ground-based, on-foot review of the progress at Fort Silicon Park, and we're very impressed with not only the ongoing improvements, but the improvements from the last number of months that are now being used, and the extent to which people are enjoying that. And to end with Claudia, if we can get the biscuit recipe and have the families' permission, I think we should post it on the website as a tribute to her. But only with permission. They didn't seem to be very secretive about it. And it's really how you need them, not what goes into them. It's the love that comes out of the hands. So is there anything further that will come before the council? If?
No, Mayor.
And we're adjourned. They said that they'd give it, but I don't know if they were serious or not. Yeah, it's Karen. Yeah. And the candy was stale. Yes, you are here.